I'm going to start with two orders of business. One is just to clarify that Mike Salmon is calling in remotely because of geographic distance. There aren't any votes to be taken tonight. If there were, we'd be doing them on a roll call basis. But Mike is here listening. He can respond to questions. On the nature of tonight's meeting, this is a meeting for public comment. We are primarily here to listen. We may ask clarifying questions if we're not quite sure what it is that you're saying, but we are not supposed to be engaging in a conversation with you about the various items. We're certainly happy to talk with you about those at a different time. We normally have a limit of five minutes per comment. Given that this is a relatively small group, I'm not going to be too tight on that, but I reserve the right at some point to say, you know, please conclude so that everyone can have a chance to speak. When you do speak, if you can add your name to the sign up sheet and then also introduce yourself, both name and your connection to this issue, which could just be Brookline resident or anything else that's relevant.
So this is Mike. I have one request, which is I'm going to try and continue to be the secretary of visit taker. So if people could state it clearly and speak up as much as you possibly can, I would appreciate that.
Okay. And also, just so you know, we are recording this. We're recording it with a personal camcorder, so it may not be quite as good as when it's on public access TV, but this is going to be a recorded meeting. Okay? We welcome people to come and speak.
Okay. I'd like to begin. I don't like waiting to talk. Okay. My name is David Lusclier, town meeting member, precinct 11. I've been following the taxi medallion question since the warrant article 26.
David, could you speak into the microphone just so it's a little easier here?
Since warrant article 26 appeared on the warrant for spring town meeting, and I appreciate the work that the moderators committee has done, and listened to the discussion, and I'm grateful for a chance to make a few remarks. Starting with Euripides, who lived in 5th century B.C., he said, "A man's most valuable trait is a religious sense of what not to believe." Remembering this ancient proverb, "I don't believe there's a free lunch. I'm skeptical about something for nothing deals. I assume that if it is too good to be true, then it is too good to be true. I restrain myself when I hear of gut, rich, quick schemes." This was my reaction when I read the Board of Selectments and the Advisory Committee reports on warrant article 26, spring 2014 town meeting. I read about the La Cockerie scheme that the town is ready to implement, and my reaction was disbelief. How, after what we have experienced over the past five years of underwater mortgages, liar loans, the bursting of the housing bubble, and the worst recession since the Great Depression, could the town be seriously considering such a scheme? The Green Caucus came out and supported warrant article 26. I wrote to Jane Gilman to ask about the Green Caucus' intentions. La Cockerie scheme, as described in warrant article 26 reports, seemed like a risky adventure in financial engineering that claimed an improved taxi fleet while simultaneously generating a massive one-time windfall for the town. I wondered if town meeting was ready to vote for warrant article 26, casting the La Cockerie based sale of medallions aside. Without an alternative plan, the taxis in Brookline do seem broken down and in need of improvement. So I took two steps. I posted a question on the Town Meeting Association listserv. I expressed concern that the La Cockerie scheme the town has adopted seems left over from the pre-Great Depression time. Is this scheme still a sensible plan, or have conditions changed, and shouldn't the town's plan change in view of what has happened? The discussion on the town meeting listserv was lively, extensive, and passionate. I filed an amendment to warrant article 26 that would postpone the effective date until after the fall town meeting in order to find out if town could find a less risky plan, if the town could find a more less risky plan. A motion to refer, that I hope could achieve the same objective, overtook my amendment. The Greeks lived by two simple rules, going back to Greece for a moment: no myself and nothing in excess. Legend is that the rules came from the oracle at Delphi. Greek literature and so much of our literature in the following thousands of years tells of the destructive tragic consequences of excess consumption. I believe the La Cockerie plan is too risky and potentially unfair to the elderly and disabled, other Brookline taxi riders, taxi companies and drivers, and the environmental mitigation goals. La Cockerie scheme would sacrifice all of these objectives because of an obsession to maximize the town's medallion windfall at all costs. The Board of Selectmen wrote in a report on warrant article 21, in the fall of 2008 town meeting. Although it was, it is town council's opinion that Mass General Law's Chapter 30B, which normally governs the sale of municipal property and requires that property be sold to the highest bidder, does not apply to the sale of taxi medallions. This article seeks exemption from this law in recognition that the working group's stated goals will most likely lead to a lower per medallion price than an unrestricted medallion. This was the original intent. If the town had more faithfully respected this intent, the town would have already received several million dollars from medallion revenue. Instead, because the process has dragged on and on, chasing the fantasy of a windfall, the town is too late and many dollars short. The asymmetrical transportation business, of which taxis are an element, is in a state of disruption and uncertainty. It is clear the relationship between the town and the taxi companies has become dysfunctional. There's a lack of mutual trust. The views and opinions of some who have worked long and hard on this issue have become deeply entrenched. Can we salvage the situation? This is up to the moderators committee. I would recommend, now my recommendations, I'm almost done. The town hires a different kind of independent consultant. The consultant should have the skills to restore trust and mutual respect between the town and the taxi companies, and find common ground and facilitate the alteration of deeply entrenched views. Right now, the taxi companies say that the town is imposing an unfair plan on them, requiring them, in effect, to buy their business again. They claim the town decided without good faith negotiation. The current plan, if implemented, they suggest, risks driving them out of Brookline. Consider the Shala recommendation that the town earmark 45 medallions to be driver-owned medallions, selling 15 per year, this subject to negotiation and good faith. Consider through good faith negotiations capping the medallion value through regulations at a level of funding needed to purchase a new vehicle that meets environmental standards and, in a sufficient number of instances, of handicap accommodation. Consider establishing through good faith negotiations that payment for medallion is due at the time of sale or transfer, through a transfer fee, not an initial acquisition. Consider a reasonable and sufficient number of medallions for the companies in addition to the driver medallions negotiated in good faith to enable the companies to improve their capitalization. The rest of the fleet, beyond the capacity needed to serve Brookline, in a range of 60, are subject to good faith negotiation, could operate with Hackney licenses as presently or convert to repainted livery vehicles. Livery vehicles would not be subject to taxi regulations. They would use an Uber-like digital dispatch system. Such a system is in the process of testing and will soon be available for deployment in Brookline for at least one of the Brookline companies. This opens the way for an expansion into a locally-based, open livery system as another choice for meeting consumer demand for asymmetrical transportation. For more information and ideas, refer to the signed, dated, highly professional Shala report, June 12, 2007. In my view, what has been lacking throughout for many years of effort among many well-intentioned people is sufficient negotiation and good faith with the stakeholders, including those who can represent the elderly, persons with handicaps, and the wider riding public. These negotiations, by their nature, will be a check on the town's apparently overwhelming appetite for a windfall financial killing at any cost, even on the elderly and disabled, and the ability of drivers to earn a fair and dignified livelihood and on the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Todd, you want a copy?
I can send it to you also. Would that be useful?
Please step up. This is an open public hearing, and whoever would like to speak next, please go ahead. Normally, a public hearing, people kind of form a line, but we can do it, one person stepping up at a time, if you like.
Thanks for the, my name is Joe Bethany. I'm the CEO of Baystate Taxi. We've been operating Brookline, Baystate Taxi, for 54 years in Brookline, right? And I just want to read a little bit of what I wrote. And we're in a very bad situation right now. All the companies are on the verge of bankruptcy, all right? So we cannot, we can't continue to operate under the current system. In the past, we were able to compete with that competition, but today, our competition is unregulated and flush with cash. Many drivers have left the taxi industry for software companies. The current licensing system affords us no relief. Another town wants us to upgrade our fleets, provide alternate transportation, and support the best program. They want us to invest in a dying system. Page 11, paragraph number three of the Shala report states that, "Drivers express a strong desire to gain equity in the taxi business so that they could realize a portion of the profits generated by their labor." Nothing has changed. Owning your own business is still the American dream. To stabilize the industry, medallions will keep and attract quality drivers to Brookline. Having spoken to several large institutions about financing our drivers, one has agreed to both with Baystate Taxi to process them through to our close association with the drivers. Drivers who lease a cab can easily pay a medallion up. The sale of the medallions will enable the cab companies to reinvest in their companies and promote their businesses. Although we have already digitized our fleet and carry the halo in Baystate app, it is not enough to keep us competitive on the same level as the software companies. However, medallion owners, however, as medallion owners, we will have an obligation to Brookline from a regulatory standpoint, meaning service to the senior citizen via the best program will continue. The best program is the most generous in the country, which allows seniors to purchase coupons for 50 cents on the dollar. The town absorbs 25 percent, and as a condition of our license, we absorb the other 25 percent. We are constantly taking seniors and residents to supermarkets and doctor's clinics. The software companies will never do that. When given the right to sell licenses, the committee needs to keep in mind both the spirit and letter of the law, which states, and in doing so, balance any competing interests and maintain the continuity of existing taxi businesses, acknowledging the investment by existing taxi license holders in their businesses, and augmenting the portion of the taxi fleet servicing the town that meets the needs of the elderly. The current plan calls for us to pay Brookline between $5 and $6 million within three years. What sane person would do that, you know? And it was bad from the outset. However, given where the industry has changed in the past year, any financial return from the town must come after the sale of a medallion. And I, to facilitate this transition, I'd like to keep it simple. You know, you want to take 15 percent away of the licenses, that's fine, and the best back end to us, with the condition that we pay a fixed price upon that sale or percentage of the sale. Thank you.
Just want to ask one clarifying question. I'm pretty sure I understood, when you, when you say "software companies," you're referring to companies like Uber?
Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to make sure that I...
I don't want to get too personal, you know?
That's fine. When you first said the drivers were looking for software companies, I thought you meant something a little more puzzling, so thank you.
And they have, you know, they really, they're creating a model that's very bad, that I think is, that will deflate over a period of time, but we can't stand for this to happen, if it does happen, you know? And, you know, a lot of our drivers want an opportunity to own a medallion, you know? And the future of the business isn't lying in the big companies anymore. It really lies in the small medallion owner, because the big fleets have cabs sitting, 50 percent of the fleet is sitting, put in dust, right? Whereas all the small associates that are in Brookline, like Dolphin Taxi, or Modern Ride, or Harley Taxi, right? They have like between, you know, one and five licenses, and they're operating all the time, because they're small and it's more personal. And someone who buys a license, that'll be their, it'll be their business, basically, all right? And all you have to do is drive it yourself, or get someone else to drive it, and share it with them, you know? And that's simple. But the big businesses, like Baystate Taxi, quite frankly, we're history, you know? And the only thing I can say is, is that if someone does, if you medallionize everything, in the past, the discussion was that they didn't have to go on to a cab association. I would have to say that it should be mandatory that they do, because that's what will keep a taxi company like Baystate Taxi in Brookline operating, all right? And like, for example, if the police, you know, today have an issue with a driver, a lost and found item, or, you know, they did this call Baystate Taxi, and then we call the driver, and he goes to police headquarters. But if you don't have a company in Brookline, you're going to have dirty authority single owners running around. I'd like to see how you're going to control them. It's going to be very, very difficult, you know? So the town has always asked us in the past to do everything, and we've always complied. We go through the toughest inspection in the country. It is the toughest inspection in the country by and of none, right? It literally costs us thousands of dollars to put these cabs through that inspection, all right? And I like it, because I can honestly say that we have the safest cabs in the country. Don't look pretty, but they're safe, you know? And, but you know, for all the things the town asked us to do, the senior citizen program, you know, we, you know, like, we need your help now. We need the town's help. If you want a cab company, if you don't want a cab company, and, you know, I'll have no choice but to become like Uber. I have no choice. You know, I can't go through all these regulations and stay competitive with them. I can't. They have no overhead whatsoever, you know? Anyway, thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Dariet Fafesi. I'm the president of Brookline Town Taxi. I really didn't plan to speak here tonight, because I figured that we have done enough talking, that we have accomplished everything, and that at the very last minute, you're being told that people are still taking to our process that have never been involved. We have a, the gentleman here brought a lot of proverb. I'd like to bring one. In my country, it says, "If you want the guy's daughter, you ask the father first," because he couldn't make or break the deal. So I'm not sure why we didn't go to the fathers first before we're going through this painful process that all of us went through. But I just had to say something, because I'm appalled by what this gentleman was saying about the free rides and about the mistrust between the operators and the town. There is no free rides here. I'm not sure how many nights this gentleman lost, not just speaking, operating a business like a taxi cab. How many times a day, he hustles with the drivers, regulators, and all other kinds of problems, insurance company that goes with it. But every single one of us here have grown a lot, much older in the past 10 to 11 years because being in this very business. And anything that's coming to us, which we still expect it to pay, is not a free ride. It's not entitlement. It's an opportunity for the town and the operators to create a better business model for the town. But the main thing at this point is that stopping this process will destroy the town's industry, the taxi industry. The taxi industry in Brookline as it is, is dysfunctional, because we've been put in limbo for many years in regard to this medallion conversion. But we do trust our people that we work with in town. We do feel like we have a consultant that at the very least, we all agree, even Mr. Bethany agreed on, and that wasn't easy. But we sat down for many meetings, many hours, many calculations, and we agreed on something that both the town and the operators could live with, that benefits the riders, benefits everybody that's involved in here. And for that to be stopped or to set back to the licensing, honestly, make a tremendous amount of changes in the licensing, which none of our companies can afford to handle, there is no way to go forward with this, except going medallionize. And that's all I got to say. Thank you.
My name is Mary Lise. I'm a Brookline resident. I'm a Brookline Town Meeting member. And I'm here mostly because I care. I'm not here as an expert on either side, but when an email was sent to a group of Town Meeting members recently, I raised some questions, and that uncovered a lot of thoughts from some other folks that I would like to share. The first question I raised was, was there any member of the committee that represents taxi drivers? And the answer was no. And I would have to say that as a Town Meeting member, I quite honestly would question the validity of conclusions if they don't include the perspectives of all of the stakeholders. And so I would hope that the committee would not only correct that oversight by bringing representatives of taxi drivers onto the committee, but would really listen to them and not just have them on as pro forma. I am aware of a group of taxi drivers in Boston who have been meeting. Their situation, of course, is very different from what we have here in Brookline, but on the other hand, we don't want Brookline to go down the same track. They feel pretty much like sharecroppers, because they're not really employees, they don't get employee benefits. At the same time, they are concerned about the competition that is coming up from companies like Uber, because medallion holders do have to adhere to very strict regulations. And so they would like to have a more level playing field between their opportunities and the opportunities that drivers of companies like Uber have. I know that some of them are coming together, I don't think they've even had their first meeting yet, to explore the possibility of establishing a co-op where they would all share ownership and participation in getting employee benefits. Among the responses that I got when I raised the questions that I did, was one that pointed out an earlier plan, apparently, that had come to the town, referred to the original Shala plan submitted to the Board of Selectmen in 2007. It proposed 45 medallions for drivers, 11 for companies, keeping Hackney licenses for the rest. In this individual's opinion, the plan seems fair and moderate, but it was not excessively profitable when it came to a windfall for the town, so it was shelved. And we know that economics is behind this. We know that the town has a serious interest in increasing revenue, and so that is part of what may drive the decision here. I don't know how many of you have been part of the process of reviewing what used to be the Human Rights, the Human Relations and Youth Resources Commission, and is now the Human Relations, Inclusion, Diversity, Whatever, Participation Commission. But I think that this inadvertently is an example of how our town lives in a bubble and doesn't really recognize that we are not an inclusive and participatory town. Most of the drivers are people of color. They are people who are being employed in our town, and I think that this is something that I would certainly bring to the attention of the new commission, and I would hope that it would alert all of the committees that are established in town to think more broadly about being inclusive and inviting participation. So I would hope that this is not just looking at the practicalities and the legalities, but also the morality of whatever decisions get made by this committee.
Is there anyone else who would like to comment?
I have a question.
Sure, go ahead.
I wanted to, um, I'm trying to get the last name. Jared, I wonder if you are aware of this way that Brookline taxi drivers are compensated? You mentioned how the Boston taxi drivers don't receive benefits and so forth. The license is just a, not a medallion system. Are you aware of how they get paid?
Yeah, sorry. That's the kind of engagement that we're not supposed to do in a public comment session.
All right. Mr. Fai, do I, that's a probably question that's...
No, he was asking if she was aware of something, not asking for clarification about her own view. He was trying to give information about...
About what she does.
Right. Yeah, that's, I've been told what the boundaries are, and that is outside the boundaries. However, it sounds like Mary Lise would like to comment, so she's going to come back and comment.
Thank you.
I didn't mention that, yeah?
Well, thank you for your interest. As I said, when I started referring to the Boston situation, I am, yes, I am definitely aware of the differences between Boston and Brookline. I don't want Brookline going down the same track, so that was part, that was part of the point that I was making.
I know I kind of get into the debate here, but the competition that the Boston and Brookline drivers see is essentially that.
Yeah, I'm going to cut you off. That's certainly not...
Yeah.
Thank you. We can certainly talk about this in another meeting. We, we can certainly talk about this in another meeting.
Good evening. Jane Gilman, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. Also not an expert, I'll keep my comments brief, but I'm a little confused by the dichotomy that's set up about whether it would be the new technology, Uber or Lyft versus standard, the way we do business now, taxis. I do take Lyft occasionally. I recently was in a cab that I believe was, it was brown, but the driver had a Lyft app right in his cab. He's employed by the brown color cab that he was driving for. He does both. And I raise that as a possibility. I also want to take this moment to raise my objection to the composition of this committee. I was dismayed when the membership was announced by the moderator. I felt that it was not representative of a broad spectrum of opinions that emerged at town meeting. I also want to raise the point that I'm concerned about stated interests that the town has an obligation to stabilize, or an implication that the town has an obligation to stabilize the industry. Because I think that that includes a lot of other considerations, as Mary Lys mentioned, some of them are more. But I talked to taxi, to taxi cab drivers, asked them how they thought they would service alone with a bank. Two of them had no idea what I was talking about. The finances are beyond their understanding at the moment I was talking to them. So I, I want to encourage this committee to weigh all interest here and not advance the town's finances on the backs of what are essentially day labelers. You've seen the mathematics about how much it costs a guy or a woman to lease a cab. And you know what interest rates are. And I ask you to do the math. How in the heck do you think a new person who's trying to get a foothold is going to achieve that and feed his children or her family? The other thing I do want to mention is that I would ask Brookline decision makers generally, not just you all, to consider the pitfalls of putting money first. We do have fiscal challenges. But I'd ask you to think, what are the other factors here? If all we need is money, we can make a lot of decisions that are not only bad, but immoral. Those studies that have been cited, the conclusions that came to us at town meeting seem to imply that because the issue of whether or not to medallionize has been studied for ten years, we should go ahead and do it. And that's not a good enough reason. We are in a changing community, a changing world, and we need fresh eyes and new thinking.
Well, we need to get this through. Mike, you're, you're getting a lot of noise on your end. I'm not sure if that's static or if you're making noise there, but I just thought.
Sorry, yeah, just tore up a piece of paper because I was on the next page. I'll put this on you.
Thanks.
Yeah, sorry.
Hi, my name's George Weber. I've been driving a taxi in Brookline since nineteen ninety-one. Still drive a taxi in Brookline. I've seen, seen a lot, a lot of changes. This, I'd say ten years ago, this was very, a very lucrative profession for anybody that was willing to put in the time to learn the job. And it was a safer place than driving in Boston because I did drive in Boston when I was in college. And the community itself is, supports a pretty good industry here. And, but there are a lot of things that have happened recently within, I'd say, a little less than a year ago, namely these computer dispatch systems. And it's really affected the business. I've seen a lot of drivers I know that had driven for quite a while that have left because basically they wanted a bigger piece of the pie. I'll give you a, a very brief summary. These drivers were solid drivers. They were paying in the neighborhood of seven hundred dollars a week to drive a taxi. And Uber is offering them, oh, I think, anywhere from two fifty to three hundred dollars or maybe more, depending on the car they get, as, to purchase a vehicle using money that they gen, they generate from taxi drivers. And what I saw of the app itself, it's, it's pretty well, it's, it's a very sweet piece of software. I'm a retired software engineer, so I know a good program when I see one, it's a very good program. It dispatches a job within five to seven minutes to the location. It gives you directions there. The passenger, the potential passenger can see where you are. And it's, it's a very, very good system. But the, the thing about Uber is they have different rates for different types of drivers. They get like, they have drivers that are, I don't know what exactly they call it because I haven't looked into it that much, but there are drivers that are kind of like, not professional drivers, just anybody can do it. And then there are drivers that are vested as limousine drivers. And then there are drivers that are invested as taxi drivers. Now, the taxi drivers are allowed to use their meter, and that provides a reasonable rate. But there's fluctuations with the, the, the non-professional drivers. Their, their rates fluctuate during the day depending on what the business volume is. And myself, I heard some of the rates and what, I haven't looked into it, investigated, but what I heard about the rates, I wouldn't do it for that kind of money. I mean, these, these might be people that are out of work, collecting unemployment, looking for a little extra income to feed the kids, whatever, to get by. I don't think they're professional drivers. And that's what, that's what you get. Like you can, there's options with Uber. You can call, call for a real fancy limousine and the guy shows up, he's, he's, he's a, basically a limo driver. Or you can call for a taxi, which is, or you can call for somebody that's just anybody. And I was talking to the captain here on the way in, and he's concerned about that. There's a public safety issue there because you don't know who, who, who the driver is. There's no, there's no record check. There's no Cory check. It's nothing like that, you know? Now, they say they do a background check, but I'm not too sure about that. That, that has to be investigated, I think. I guess what I'm saying here is there's a lot of changes going on. And to be, my observation would be right now that the industry, I see drivers leaving, there's not as much work. This is probably, of all my years driving a taxi, this summer has probably been the toughest financially for me. I'm taking a lot of time off here, you know, because there's days I go out there and I break even, you know? And working ten hours, twelve hours a day to break even is no fun at all. I think I need a head check after I do that, you know, and take a day off, so chill out. The other, the other thing I would like to say, or the comment by some of these ladies here, is that, you know, initially, when I heard about this thing, I got kind of involved in it because I'm kind of hippie activist from the sixties. And when I heard that the drivers would have an opportunity to participate in part of the business and create, you know, create their own small businesses within, I got seriously involved in it. But, you know, I took another path years later and, you know, I, I didn't know quite what, what that meant. And, but these ladies here have, they're making an interesting point. I mean, this is, this is a big industry here and, you know, I think, I think that there's, the drive, the drivers themselves earn an opportunity to get a piece of the pie, so to speak. If, if, now, these guys have been doing this for like twenty, 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 thirty years, that's, that's a career. And that, I think that that's the kind of guy you want. I mean, if I was thinking about the whole thing, what I would say is what you want is a guy that's willing to make a long-term investment in the business because you're going to have a professional come out of it just, just because he's driving and he's learning and he's, he's, he's becoming a better driver every, every day he works. That's all I have to say.
Do we have any other speakers?
I think Matt.
Good evening. Don Lecker, Town Meeting Member, Precinct Three. We've heard a lot tonight and earlier times about how things are changing. And I want to suggest to you that trying to cope with those changes by using what I believe to be an antiquated medallion system is a way of guaranteeing a, a failure as an outcome. I think we need to step back, see what it is we're trying to accomplish. And I think you'll see creating artificial value of seventy-five thousand, a hundred and twenty-five thousand is not the way to create a better taxi industry in Brookline. Thank you.
Any other speakers?
My name's Matthew Mazada. I run Brookline Red Cab. I bring a little different perspective to this because unlike the other people here that run companies, I don't own the company. I believe that over the last five years that I've been running Red Cab, you know, I came in a little bit late, so if any of this was said, I apologize, that the industry has been put on hold. There's been lots and lots of stops and starts and fits and starts revolving around this business. And the ability to make long-term decisions has been completely stifled. I think it's been very unfair. I think that for all the well-meaning people, Todd, John, you know, anybody that's been involved in this, you know, it's just been a very difficult five and for some people thirteen years working this problem. So, you know, the, the couple of things that I'd like to say about it is that, you know, we've been working for a long time in good faith with the idea that this process would do a number of things that are already talked about, but in the meetings I've attended, we haven't talked about the fact that, you know, in one of Mr. LaCapper's earlier reports it discussed just how underserved the industry is by the town of Brookline. And I, I like the big, the big-minded ideas, but I do believe that they need funding. And we've been talking about this medallionization as not necessarily the windfall, but as, but as a way of developing funding sources to actually provide a full-time hackney officer, multiple hackney officers, the ability for any officer in the police force to have a hackney responsibility. The fact that we could have a full-time person inside the transportation department to deal with issues of the taxi industry. At times it's frustrating when you're looking for an answer to a problem, like a driver who's, you know, we've discussed, crashed your car, leaves it someplace, doesn't call you to tell you it's damaged, and then three months later you see him working at a, at a competitor's business. You know, there is no tool inside of the hackney officer's tool case right now to not renew his license to, to stop him from driving. Okay? So my first point is that medallions provides that opportunity, provides a well-trodden path where the industry and the town have agreed that they're going to use a number of these funding sources to develop new resources, which will then allow the industry to have pledgeable assets that will allow the industry to make their technology and vehicle upgrades and have a belief that their business will be there for the long term. The last thing I think that gets overlooked in a lot of this is that the medallion system in fact creates the only point of entry for new business owners that I've seen in this business in the five years I've been here. And people ask me all the time, how do I get a license in Brookline? They're not issuing any new licenses. But to bring new blood into the industry, at whatever level the price ends up being, you will bring new blood, new resources, new points of view on an industry in here. And it will allow many of the gentlemen in the back of the room to make a first step at being an independent business owner as opposed to working for a larger company. So those are just some of the points I'd like to leave you guys with.
Hi, John Harris. And I wish I had an actual outline, I really don't. I'm just going to wing it with some, addressing some concerns that folks have said here. And the, the first thing I want to say is make a clear distinction in the plans that are set in operation at this point between the first couple of years, two or three years, when the tier system would, would hypothetically be implemented, where first of all, some existing, or all of the existing company owners would be, I think, given a certain number of medallions. And then in the second or possibly third tier would be able to buy certain more medallions at a, at a kind of artificially low price. That, that tier period, which as I understand it would only last for two or three years, is, would temporarily be a, a period of cornucopia, I think, for the owners. Because at that point, they would be given these medallions. The medallions involve a quota, they, which means that outsiders would be prevented from entering the, the industry. And on top of that, they would be able to get, based on these medallions they were either given or, or purchased at a very low price, they would be able to go to, to banks and use the medallions as leverage for loans for higher amounts of money. So they would in fact be able to, in the short term, be able to buy a new hybrid vehicle or low mileage vehicle with fantastic safety features, et cetera, et cetera. The question comes, what medallions do is create a new ownership interest, a new form of property that in Brookline currently does not exist. And so, and, and once property is created, there is a constitutional right that the owner can retain that property. It is very difficult to remove that. So basically, the whole idea of this tier system is that it would kind of prime and create a brand-new market. And that, once the tier period, again, of two or three years is over, that medallions would be sold on an open market. Taxi, and different numbers have been thrown out as to how expensive the medallions would be at that point. I've heard a figure of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. But I also am very aware that the city of Boston taxi medallions are selling for between six hundred and seven hundred thousand dollars. I'm told that that's not relevant to Brookline because the Boston market is so much bigger. Except then I'm, I also am aware that the city of Cambridge medallions track Boston's prices. Brookline has a hundred and eighty-some taxis at this point. Cambridge has two hundred and fifty-some taxis. So Brookline and Cambridge, the taxi industry is about equivalent size. And Cambridge, in Cambridge, medallions again are selling over six hundred thousand dollars, roughly the same price as in Boston. Another nearby point of comparison might be Somerville. Medallions in Somerville are selling between three hundred and three hundred and fifty thousand dollars, I'm told. So the point I'm making with this is that the, the proposed plan would create, for a very short time, very good conditions for a single upgrade of vehicles. But after that tier period is over and once medallions hit the open market, the sky is the limit in terms of the price, and no one knows how expensive they will be. And the, the group I am most concerned about with that, and I, I do want to respond to some of the drivers who have spoken, and in particular to the idea that medallions will, will, will give drivers a a particularly good opportunity to buy into the industry. Well, you know, I could see an existing driver, and in Brookline, drivers clear or make $30,000 a year at this point, I'm told, according to a town study. I could see a person in that situation qualifying for a vehicle loan to buy a taxi, new or used, whatever, at the amount of $10,000, $20,000, $30,000, whatever it might be. But I honestly can't see a person making $30,000 qualifying for a taxi medallion at $120,000, $300,000, $600,000. I simply can't see that person, you know, a bank, you know, giving that person a medallion with that kind of financial background. So, one of my biggest concerns about medallions is that it would not create an opportunity for drivers to own their own vehicles, which would be the American dream. But in fact, it would actively thwart that. And then finally, I do want to give a piece of information from a news story that came out a short time ago. Again, apparently, Brookline drivers who work full-time or more, 40 hours a week or more, are averaging $30,000 a year. Uber released a information of a study they did, at this point, probably a month or two ago, which said they analyzed the incomes of their drivers and they know the incomes of their drivers because all of Uber's transactions are done over credit card. So, basically, every dollar, even apparently tips are done through credit cards. So, Uber can track every dollar that drivers make. And basically, apparently, the median driver in New York City who works 40 hours a week or more earns $90,000 a year. Okay? And the median driver in San Francisco who works 40 hours a week or more earns $75,000 a year. Okay? Again, that's a gross number, but it's comparable to the gross number of the $30,000 a year that Brookline drivers are currently earning. So...